We're gonna get started, councilors?
Let's do it.
Yeah, no.
You can.
Welcome, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, April 21st council meeting. I hope everyone had a nice holiday weekend. And I'm gonna ask our kid mayor, Audrey Kravanka, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Audrey?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you, any of you may know, and for those of you that don't, we launched a kid mayor program in our elementary schools last year. The purpose was to teach kids about democracy with a special emphasis on local government. And each of the schools have participated in the kid mayor and kid board of education chair, and they've submitted essays. And I get the pleasure of reading all the essays. And Audrey's essay was fantastic. And those of you, and she is a winner, congratulations. And those of you that have been following along with us, we have, during this time, the springtime, we bring our winners in to read their essays to the whole town. So Audrey, I invite you up here. Please sit in my seat and read your essay, which I've read a couple times, and it's fantastic. So this is our kid mayor representing Highcrest School. Take your time, speak right into the microphone.
Hello, Madam Mayor. How you doing?
Hi, I'm good.
You can speak right, so everybody can hear you?
Yeah.
Welcome to the club.
Thank you. Why I Wanna Be Kid Mayor. Hello, my name is Audrey Kravanka, and I am applying for the position of kid mayor because I care deeply about our community here in Weathersfield. Abraham Lincoln once said, "The best way to predict your future is to create it." As kid mayor, I believe that I can help shape the future of our wonderful town. I am never afraid to stand up for what I believe in and love solving problems and coming up with solutions. Abraham Lincoln motivated me to become kid mayor because of his wisdom, strong will, and kind heart. He stood up for equality and fairness even during the most difficult times. Lincoln's life inspires me to work hard and never give up. As kid mayor, I want to be like him. Role of kid mayor is very important. I believe that I am ready for its responsibilities. If I become kid mayor, I promise to bring strong leadership skills and a sense of fairness to this position. I will listen to the voices of all of Weathersfield citizens, young and old, so that I can make thoughtful decisions to help our community. As kid mayor, I will work hard to represent our town with pride and integrity. Like Lincoln, I believe in the power of bringing people together. We don't have to agree on everything, but by working together as a community, we can make Weathersfield an even better place to live, both now and in the future. As kid mayor, I will look to organize community-wide activities where people have to get outside and enjoy the fresh air for a few hours to get them off screens. I call these get-up-and-go days. I hope that this will help the young people in our towns to socialize in healthy ways. In addition, I would encourage my peers to participate in their community beyond their schools. As kid mayor, I would like to set up aside a certain weekends to dedicate to helping the elderly and people in need in our community. Young people could help older folks clean up their yards, do the dishes, and even play a fun game with them. I believe that this will bring the whole community together. I will also look to create donation stations all around the town to support families in need. The money and items collected will be given to children's hospitals, the Keane Foundation, and local homeless shelters. I believe that the health of my community is very important. As kid mayor, I would work to promote the We Hope Coalition, which helps create a drug-free, healthy choices community. I may be too young to join this coalition, but I would like to support its mission in anywhere I can. I would encourage other students to make flyers, hang posters, and attend events in support of this wonderful cause. I am hopeful that this will convince more young people to become involved in a healthy, drug-free Weathersfield. During the Civil War, Lincoln reminded Americans that they could not escape history. For me, that means that we must protect Weathersfield's historic past, and all the students should actively maintain our town's historic buildings and landmarks so that future generations can enjoy these wonderful spaces as I have. What kind of example will we set for them if yet such important pieces of our history fade away? As kid mayor, I would hope to set up a time when volunteers from the Historical Society to come in and teach the students about history and how best to preserve it. This will hopefully spark an interest in students so that they can understand, appreciate the people who have lived before them. Finally, if I was selected as kid mayor, I would like to help improve the Silas Dean Highway. I would love to see more streetlights in walkable areas here. This would hopefully draw in businesses and make the town more inviting to residents and visitors. As kid mayor, I would also like to create a tree planting campaign. Here, volunteers would plant trees all along Silas Dean Highway. The last tree would be a white oak tree modeled for a state's original charter oak, and could be planted on Old Weathersfield Green with our country's 250th birthday coming up next year. Perhaps we can plant the final tree on the Fourth of July. The role of kid mayor is very important, and these are just a few of the changes I have in mind for Weathersfield. By listening to all members of our community and working together, I believe that we can continue to make this town a wonderful place to live. I look forward to this opportunity, and thank you for your consideration.
I'm gonna go sit down. You stay there. That was fantastic, Audrey. That was such a wonderful, wonderful essay. Parents, you should be very proud. As we've done in the past, we'd like to take a photo with Audrey sitting here in my seat, in the mayor's seat, of all the councilors, Sue and Fred. If you guys would gather around, if you'd like to come forward and take a picture. And then again, you guys are welcome to stay for our budget meeting. Of course, I'd like Audrey to stay in this seat. She did a fantastic job. Thank you. One more round of applause. Shake everybody's hands, all the councilors, all the way down.
Oh, sorry.
Great job. You can shake Brianna's hand, too. Audrey, come back. You have a few more, plus we have something to give you. This is a pin. Is the seal of Weathersfield? Congratulations. Yeah? This is yours? Pretty smart. Did you catch all of them?
I didn't.
Trees?
The whole thing.
Some things are pretty obvious, Kevin.
I'm ready.
Isn't that weird?
Audrey, again, thank you. You did an amazing job. We're gonna move on to something I forgot, which is the roll call, which we can do now, but I was so excited to hear Audrey's presentation, so I apologize. Sue?
Mayor Lesser?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forrest?
Here.
Councilor Bailey?
Here.
Councilor Carbone?
Here.
Councilor Clancy?
Here.
Councilor Durek?
Here.
Councilor Roats?
Councilor Timbrow?
Here.
Councilor Zambrello?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. So as I think everybody in the audience knows, but just to repeat, tonight is our budget hearing. We will hear from our superintendent of schools, Michael Emmett, our town manager, Fred Presley. We will have council comments and questions. We will have public comments. And then after tonight, we have four workshops scheduled. That's Thursday night, this Thursday, the 28th, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday of next week. And then we will be in budget deliberations. And then by May 15th, we have to pass a town budget. We tentatively have scheduled a special meeting on Wednesday, May 14th, to pass the budget for the town of Weathersfield. So at this time, I'm gonna ask our superintendent, Michael Emmett, to present the 25-26 Weathersfield Public Schools budget. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. I do have to ask, does the kid mayor get a vote during deliberations? Very well done. Very well done.
He's just, he's like Chris. We talked to him.
Got a lot of good ideas there.
Yes, she does have a lot of good ones.
I feel like I've heard of those ideas before.
All set.
I think those are mine. Those are yours.
Oh, mine aren't either.
Good evening, everyone. Definitely a pleasure to be with you this evening. This is my 13th budget hearing as superintendent of the Weathersfield Public Schools, and my final one. As you know, the Board of Education has begun its work, actually began its work back in the January, February time period, and has worked diligently to craft a budget that we feel really tries to strike the balance of meeting the needs of our students, meeting the needs of our staff, as well as being responsible to the taxpayer. So in a nutshell, this is the abridged version of a presentation I made before you, the full council, on the 17th of March, as well as a presentation to the Board of Education prior to that date. For the 24-25 budget, we currently have an operating budget of $64,937,803. The proposed Board of Education budget for 25-26 will be $68,153,339. This is an increase of $3,215,536 over the current operating budget, a percentage increase of 4.95%. Just to go through quickly the budget process and revisions, we had a series of budget workshops held over the course of three Saturdays in the month of February. Our original proposed budget increase started off at 5.47%, or $3,550,596. This included the following needs and requests: three math interventionists. These were positions that we had lost after ESER funding ran out. We're looking for an additional social worker in district to support mental health. We're looking for five elementary security guards. We saw that as a gap area. Weathersfield, as you know, Weathersfield Public Schools faced a threat on September 11th of this year, and we feel that it was necessary to include such support in the budget for next year. We're also looking, and at 5.47%, to get a special education teacher. This would be over at Silas Dean Middle School, again, to meet the needs of our students with special needs and keep them in district as opposed to having to go out of district. The board also looked to add an EL supervisor. This is an administrative position, and this position is designed to support our 10 EL teachers across the district, as well as our approximately 400 ELL students. We're also looking to maintain Weathersfield High School A-CAP stipends. A-CAP is an alternate program for our students at the high school who are looking to gain the credits they need to graduate. It's an alternative opportunity for students, and they attend from 3:15 in the afternoon to 5:15 on a daily basis. We are currently subscribed in that program. We have 13 students that are earning credit toward graduation as opposed to dropping out. Again, the other piece we're looking at is the pre-K expansion, one special education preschool teacher and one speech pathologist. This was a request we made in the budget last year. And then finally, we are looking for an in-school suspension coordinator at Silas Dean Middle School to maintain consistency with the one we have at the high school and reduce the frequency of out-of-school suspensions at the middle school. Over the course of February 8th and February 22nd, we had two more budget workshops. The board worked diligently with our administrative team, and we revised the budget with the following amendments. We adjusted the math interventionist positions from three to one, so that one individual would be at the elementary level and would rotate through schools. It's not optimal, but certainly something that we would look to do. We've adjusted the elementary security positions from five to three. Again, that would be the scenario where our director of security would be involved in setting a schedule to rotate those guards across the five elementary schools. And we did adjust budgetary hours for our elementary recess aids, which support our students out at recess. We have a mandate. We must provide recess, a certain number of minutes of recess for all of our students in K through six. With all of those adjustments, we came in with a revised proposed budget increase that you see here tonight of 4.95%. Again, this is a slide that you see every year. The vast majority of our budget is tied up in salaries and benefits. And again, this is not unusual. It's typical among districts across the state. We're about 83%, 84% of salaries and benefits. Show you some of our historical budget increases. Over the course of time, we came in a little bit lower than what the council-approved budget increase was for last year. Just to give you a comparison, these numbers are updated from the previous presentation. Multiple boards have now set their budgets. We have two columns here, DURG-D, that's the district reference group where Weathersfield falls. These are all DURG-D districts, so you can see a variety of numbers where districts have come in. And then others, along with their reference groups. So for example, Avon in DURG-B came in at 4.29%. Down to Westbrook in DURG-E, below Weathersfield, at 3.45%. So the average settlement with regard to Board of Ed budgets is around 5.34%, according to the Connecticut Association of School Business Officials. And again, I want to point out also, this slide you've seen before as well, we have seen an increasing number of high-need students. Those are students who are English language learners, students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch, or students that are receiving special services under an IEP. Just to go quickly through budget factors, as I mentioned before, salaries. The salary increases are a total of 5.5%. That encompasses all of our bargaining units, as well as increases for our non-affiliated members. One of the things that you've heard is the retention issue and the difficulty that districts are having retaining and recruiting teachers. I will say, we have negotiated over this past year. We settled a contract with the teachers' union. We settled with the nurses' union, and we settled with the secretaries, pares, and tutors' union. And I think we were consistent with what the average contractual increase was across the state. Looking at benefits, again, we have maintained a health insurance premium increase of 6% throughout our deliberations. And again, we'll wait to hear back from the town with regard to pension and OPEB contribution amounts as this work continues. Contracted services, again, we do feel the effects of inflation. There's no two ways about it. Everything is costing more. Again, I think one of the things that we look at, too, is with total transportation budget, we do have a transportation contract with an outside provider. We're looking at an increase of approximately 3% based on contractual terms and anticipated outplacement routes. One of the things that I will say is we work hard with other surrounding towns. If we have students that are in outplacements and we can ride-share to find cost savings, we certainly will do that. And again, we're looking at total tuition. It's increasing $225,000 due to projected enrollment, including an increase in the number of students receiving specialized services. As I've said, year in and year out, special education tends to be the wild card. We may have a family that moves in over the course of the summer where a student requires IEP services beyond what we can provide, and I have an obligation legally to provide services for that student in the least restrictive environment. Supplies, again, speaking to the issue of inflation, our supply accounts are increasing an aggregate of 8.62%. It's interesting, total instructional supplies throughout the district account for only 0.71% of the proposed operating budget. So when we're looking at ways in areas to cut, there's not a lot here we're able to cut. Again, with property, equipment is increasing 15.96%. And again, we're looking to replace musical instruments throughout the district. We've done that over the course of the past two years. This is the second year of that. And one of the issues with that is we've got so many more students playing instruments. It's a good problem to have, quite frankly. And then just with regard to budget meetings and presentations, as I mentioned, we had the three budget workshops. I presented the budget to the Board of Education, where it was approved on March 11th. It was forwarded to the town by charter on the 15th of March. I presented on March 17th to council. This evening, we are here for the budget hearing, and then we have our meeting with town council coming up on May 1st. So we look forward to meeting with you, answering any further questions you have, and hopefully coming up with a budget that meets the needs of our students and balances with what the needs of the taxpayers are. With that, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And as I said last time, but I'll repeat again, we thank you as a community for your 13 wonderful years and your dedication to Weathersfield and to all of our kids in our town. So thank you for all that, Michael. I will, I know we have Michael here, and I know he's coming back on May 1st. Is there any quick questions from councilors before we go to the town manager's report? And then after the town manager's report, we will open it up to the public to speak on any budget item, school-related, town-related. But any quick questions of any councilors on the super, Councilor Durek?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep a quick, Mr. Emmett, thank you for a detailed presentation. Just a quick question regarding the first graders in web school, have 27 kids in the classroom. I don't see anything here being mentioned. The budget, is that being taken care of in some other way, or?
We will look to see. That's a great question. We will look to see what we have in terms of availability to potentially collapse another class. It's not an additional budget request, but we'll look to see if we have class sizes across the district that are lower, where we could collapse a class and expand there.
And that will be effective next school year?
That's what we'd be looking at, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All set, Councilor Durek? Thank you. Further, Deputy Mayor Forrest?
Thanks, Mayor. One, and quickly, the increase, the budget, the, there are several positions that you're looking to increase.
Yes.
Are those budgets, those budgets, are those positions presented in priority order?
In priority order? Yes. So what I would want to do first and foremost would be to get the security guards. Then I would go, after the security guards, I would go with preschool, following preschool as a special ed teacher. And then beyond that, ELL director.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thomas Quick?
Thank you. On the security guards, Michael, are we able to get, I think I may have asked this before, and I believe the board got it, can we get what our nearby towns have for elementary school security guards? My understanding that some have them, every elementary school, some don't have them at all. That would be helpful. I know you guys decide that we just give you a number.
Yes.
Budget, but I would like to.
Yes.
For the council to see, I think you've done some research in there.
I have that, sir. Yes. Happy to share that.
Anybody else for? Thank you again, Michael.
Thank you.
And I'll ask our town manager, Fred Presley, to present the town budget. Thank you, Fred.
Thank you, Mayor Lesser, Deputy Mayor Forrest, members of the town council, citizens of Weathersfield. It's my pleasure and honor once again to present to you the fiscal year budget for the upcoming year. You know, as you all know, a lot goes into the production of the budget each year. It's literally months of work. And I especially want to acknowledge the work of our finance department, Finance Director Mike O'Neill, who's here, Joe Clerkin from his office, from my office, Cheryl Pierce, who's out in the hallway, and Erica Robertson, all have spent a number of hours working through this. For those of you that aren't aware, we also have a new budget system, which is online. If you're viewing the budget online, it's a much better system, much more user-friendly. It'll allow you to access the data far easier than ever before. But with that said, uploading all the new, all the old information and the new information into this new system was a big lift, and staff worked extra hard to get this completed on time. So I hope you take advantage of that. There'll be a link for it in this presentation. It will also be provided to you while we're gonna, we'll take the two presentations from tonight and put them up on our website that you can access separately, so you don't have to go through the whole meeting. We'll also provide on our budget side some snippets that you can just go and look at certain sections, so you, again, so you don't have to look at the whole thing. We know that attention span this day and age is particularly important, and we want to keep people, give people the information that they need. So with that, similar to last year, you know, we try to come up with a theme each year. And this year, we chose improving service levels while adjusting to the impacts of the revaluation and the continued pressures of inflation that we're all experiencing, both here and at home, I know. What we're gonna do, this is the brief agenda, you'll see this slide repeated, so the area that's highlighted in the maroon is what's gonna be coming next. Like I do every year, I like to start with accomplishments that we've achieved over the last year. And once again, you know, there's a lot of focus on the negative, not just in this town, in every town. It's just kind of the nature of people. I think they like to focus on the negative. Sometimes it's easier. But I think a lot of great things have happened this year. All you need to do is drive down the Silas Dean Highway today, Berlin Turnpike, and you can see the number of new businesses either currently under construction or recently opened. That doesn't happen by accident. This, my staff here, particularly Economic Development, Joya Zach and others, the mayors that I've been working with, this takes years to get to this point, and now we're just beginning to see the fruits of that labor. So I just want to acknowledge that. And there's more in the queue as well. So we're gonna see more of those things coming online in the next year or two. So I just wanted to point that out and note that, you know, that's very real, and it's something that's happening, and it will have an impact on our taxes in the future. Also, with respect to technology and access to information, I mentioned the new budget system, but we also have implemented the C Click Fix, the 3-1-1 system. You can access that on our website. You can get it on your phone. And if you see anything, a pothole, grass is not cut, a dilapidated building somewhere, graffiti, you can snap a picture, submit it, and it will geolocate the picture, send it in, and you'll get a response, and it'll assign it to the proper department. Okay? And then we can also report at the end of the quarter, at the end of each year, you know, how we've been doing and getting what, where the problem areas are, and we can devote resources to that, but you can also see how our response has been. We have a new online permitting system. We had an old one that we had started on the town before I got here, but it was only effective in one department. And we really felt it was important that not just building, but the fire marshal's office, the planning department, Economic Development are all on the same system, and Engineering as well. So we upgraded to a new system, which is coming online very soon. A new website finally is gonna go, it's gonna launch the first week of May. And so again, that's another big lift. All the departments have been working hard to get all the information off our current website onto the new website. So in addition to that, comprehensive plan, the Plan of Conservation Development, the draft update is nearing completion, and the first-ever affordable housing plan for the town is also nearing completion. So that's just a handful of the items. You can see the other things. Last one I'll mention is the enhanced social media presence. You know, I talked about this before. This day and age, we have got to stay on top of the information, what's out there. There's a lot of pages on Facebook and Instagram that we don't control, but we can control our own. And people can learn that if they want the real information, the right information, they can go to our site. So we've really put a lot of effort into enhancing our social media presence, and I think that we've seen the benefits of that in this past year, and I'll talk more about that a little bit later. So next, I do every year, community profile. Generally, this information doesn't change all that much, but we'll start with population. We've been pretty steady, about 27,000 people. Unemployment rate also has been pretty steady, just below 4% for the last few years. Median household income has steadily increased, and I'll show a chart on that in a while. Average assessed value, which we're gonna dive into in a moment, has increased a lot. It's gone from 175 that we've been using in the past to 277. And again, that's the assessed value, not the market rate. Average market rate value of single-family home is almost $400,000 this year. And again, we'll see those numbers when we talk about the revow. Weathersfield-specific challenges, I mention this every year, we're pretty much a built-out community. What that means is there's limited opportunity for growth, particularly in the commercial sector. Our opportunities are all in redevelopment. That's what you're seeing on Silas Dean, and that's what you're seeing on Berlin Turnpike now. These are redeveloped properties that will absolutely increase our grand list, but it's a lot slower than if you have lots of open land that you can develop on. So it takes a lot more work. The grand list growth we saw this year was over 38%. It's almost entirely from that revaluation. We average about 1% to 2% of grand list growth outside of that in a given year. And we still deal with the continued impacts of inflation, just like all of you, particularly like electric prices. Our electric bill, you think yours is high? The high school over here saw its electric bill increase by over $300,000 this year. And that wasn't budgeted for because they weren't telling us the increases were coming until we were mid into the year. So these are the types of challenges. I put this chart on the right here. You'll be able to see it better if you look at the presentation later, but essentially, Goldman Sachs puts out a, what's called Economic Policy Uncertainty Index, and they chart this on a regular basis. And if you'll notice, area circled in red there, there are some, four periods in the last 30 years where that number's really spiked. One is the 2001 recession. That's the first one on the left. Then it was the great financial crisis or the real estate crash in late 2008, 2009 period. COVID-19, the pandemic in 2020 is that third one, and then you see the current time right now. We are right now, today, higher than we were in the 2001 recession in terms of economic uncertainty. Lot of things at play. That's a global report, and, but it just kind of tells you the kind of difficulty that we deal. we deal with as locality, just like all of you do in your own homes, when we're dealing with this type of economic uncertainty across the board. So these are interesting times, to say the least. Speaking of interesting times, I want to talk a little bit about the revale. Been getting a lot of chatter about the revaluation. A lot of people are very upset with their evaluation, but it's been six years since our last revale. It's, we're required to do it every five years, but because we had no assessor for almost nine months, we had asked for an extension on that, so the revale's been completed. Before I go into the details of it, just want to say a little bit about what a revaluation is. So it's based upon a number of factors, and people need to understand it's about the real estate market. It's buyers and sellers that determine your property's value, and during the revale, the assessor's office and our consultants analyze recent property sales and a lot of other factors, like the market conditions, size, quality, age of the buildings, improvements that you might have made, deterioration, neighborhood conditions, zoning. Assessors also study real estate sales one to two years to be able to determine different valuation parameters, like construction cost and land rates. And all this is wrapped into what's called the mass appraisal methodology. So we don't have like the details on each individual house. What they do is they put in your information on each individual house, take all those factors in, put it into a model, and it comes up with numbers based upon all these factors in your neighborhood and for your specific house properties. What it is not, it's not optional. We have to do this, and the process is very strictly defined by the state of Connecticut. It is not a way to generate extra income. I've read a lot of that on social media. It is simply not the case. This council has no authority over what that revale says, what it does, no council does. It's really based on process only, and it's completely separate from the budget process. So once the revale is done, we have a grand list number, and then I provide them with a budget, they work through their numbers, they come up with a number that they're happy with, that they can live with, and then from that, based upon the grand list number, they have to come up with a mill rate that applies to all of your properties. And as I'll show you in a minute, it really is gonna vary for a lot of people in a lot of different ways. So Connecticut is the fourth highest state in the country with respect to housing price index growth. We're talking, the other states are Hawaii, Rhode Island, New Jersey, Delaware, all coastal communities, all, a lot of growth pressures. Hartford, the Hartford metro region is the fourth highest region in the country for housing market right now. So a lot of competition. If you, someone that's purchased a home here in the last few years, we put in bids on four homes before we got our house. We were outbid every time, and we learned, okay, you gotta bid way over what they're actually asking, and you've gotta, you're going to take a house that you're willing to do some work on. People have been experiencing that nonstop. So when you see your values and you go, what the heck is going on here? How'd that get like that? I don't believe it. Believe it. It's, these numbers are real, and there's also process, obviously. If you don't agree with it, appeal to the Board of Appeals, and if that doesn't work out for you, you can go to court with it, too. So there's processes here. But this chart here, I asked staff to produce for me because it shows a couple of things. So what you see there, I know it's difficult to see from where you're at, so you'll take some time maybe later to look at it in more detail. But the blue dots on here, which are all kind of mushed together, are residential properties in town. These are real, these are all of the properties in town, single-family homes. The Y-axis on the left is the percent change in the assessment from the previous valuation to the current revaluation. The green dots are condos. I threw those in here to show them as well. The orange line that runs across the middle there is the average increase of all properties, all types, in the town of Weathersfield, which is right around 45% or so. And then along the bottom there, you have the home value as of the last valuation. So you can see the first number zero, then you go at the corner, and then you have 100,000, 200,000, 300,000 across. What this shows you right away is that the majority of the residential properties in this town were way above the average, if you look at this. And if that's the case, and they're gonna see if we did nothing else, kept the budget flat, they would see an increase, depending on how high they were above that line, would determine the amount of that increase. There are still some below, too, but the majority of the residential properties are above that line. And I just want to show this representation, because when I show the next one, which is commercial properties in town, we only have about 350 or so commercial properties in town, as opposed to 10,000-plus residential properties in town. And if you look at, or 8,000-plus residential, a single-family, same type of information. The left hand is the change in the percent, percent change over the last valuation. The orange line is that average, and then the yellow dots all represent commercial properties. And as you'll notice, it jumps right out, is that most commercial properties are below that line, and some are way below that line. And what we saw in reality, when you look at the data, you got two charts here. One is pre-reval on the left, and the other one's post-reval on the right. And if you look at what the actual valuation numbers are, out of the entire grand list, pre-reval, 70.8% of all valuation was for residential, single-family residential home. 23.4% was commercial. Not a bad split. We consider the number of properties is actually really low. I think we have less than 3% commercial properties overall, but they made up 23% of the actual valuation. But what we see post-valuation, revale, is a shift in about 3.1%, straight up. You look at those two numbers, you see 3.1% go over to the other side. And that might not seem like a lot, but 3.1% with the grand list equates to about $103 million in value, in assessed value, and $103 million at the proposed mill rate, which I'll get into shortly, would be about $3.4 million. That would have been paid by the commercial properties, but now it's gonna be paid, spread across the residential properties, again, depending on where you fall in that spectrum of increase or decrease. And that's something we can't control. That is just the fact. That's what the revale shows, and that is a process we're bound to by state law. So with that as kind of the backdrop, I'm gonna go into the proposed budget. Like Mr. Emmett spoke about, you know, we have certain budget drivers as well. Some of them are the same. Health insurance costs in total went up about 7%. Refugees collection, we're talking about a $300,000 increase. A lot of that has to do with the yard waste collection for the first year. We talked about this when we implemented yard waste, that it was gonna take probably three to four years to ramp up the collection rate there, because it's a new learning that people have to do. We have to kind of build in a new habit. They're not used to putting their yard waste on the corner in the brown bags or in the brown barrels. They're used to just throwing it in the green barrel with everything else. We have to change that approach. We were very happy with the first year in terms of the number of people that actually purchased the barrels and putting them out there every two weeks, but we knew there'd be an increased cost initially for the first few years, and this bears some of that, and then there's just also the regular increases that come with the refuse contract. Electricity increases, 15% is a very, probably not as conservative as we should be based upon this year, but we're hopeful that some of these fees are gonna go away, based upon what we've been hearing. So we tried to keep that in check somewhat, but again, the high school alone this year was over $300,000 more than budgeted, but we think that's gonna come back into some kind of a leveling at this point. Pensions up 6%, retiring medicals up 10%, salaries and wages total of 7.4% increase. And again, these are all contractual, like Mr. Emmett explained for the schools. We've gone through and negotiated a number of contracts this year. I think we just have one more to do for this year that's coming up due, but in all those, we've been at or below the average statewide, but with that and with the current inflationary pressures, you know, those have cost to them. Revenue summary, you know, kind of talked a little bit about this, but again, property taxes, that biggest green section there, make up the overwhelming majority of our revenues, and that's followed by education grants for the schools, and then various other categories, investment income, intergovernmental funds from the state, and then fees and licenses. You'll notice fund balance, there's no number there, because we have not in this budget proposed any use of fund balance to fund this budget at this point. That's within the council's purview to do, and they generally do some at some point to reduce the mill rate further, but that's at their discretion. So we show it there as an option, but there's no number assigned to that with the proposed budget. Where's the money go? Education's about 52% as proposed. We put the proposed Board of Ed budget exactly as we get it. Debt service is about 3%. General government, the entire amount is about 5% for, that's, then we look at public safety, which you have police, fire, and public works. That's another 27% total, those together. That's really the bulk of your budget, and the other departments kind of fill in the gap, MDC 3%, insurance and other factors. So as we go through this, by the numbers, the proposed budget recommends a total of 4.95% increase in expenditures over last year. The town's increase as proposed in the budget book is 3.85%. I will tell you, when we started this with department request, that was up around 10%. And I don't think those were unreasonable requests. We did a lot of pencil sharpening to get this down as low as we felt was responsible to continue to improve on the services that we are providing without being overly burdensome, particularly this year, given the revale and the impact on many residents. This also includes about $2 million for CIP, CNEF. That's kind of the average that we've been doing for those two accounts over the last three years. I've stated several times in this presentation in the last few years, we need to build that. We need to do more than that. This was not the year to do that, I don't believe, unfortunately, as much as we need to. So we're proposing $1 million in each of those. Unassigned fund balance as proposed, it's at about 11.5%. Now that is over the guidelines that we have in our policy of 7% to 10%, but particularly heading into a year where we have a potential referendum and have to go out to bond, the more you can have your fund balance up there, the better that's gonna look for an interest rate. So we're trying to think long-term on that, so we try to keep that up a little higher than we would normally have to do. Debt service is decreasing in this budget by $740,000. Most of that is the high school. Debt service is slowly coming off the books, which is, again, a good thing as we go into a potential new bond referendum. And that's only 2.8% of our general fund budget, which is, I'll tell you, very low. If you look at other communities, they're generally much higher than that. One mil now, based upon the current valuation, is worth $3 million. So that means if you want to decrease this budget by a mil, you're gonna have to knock $3 million off this budget. It's that straightforward. So there's a lot of work to that, and, but, you know, I think there are steps we can take to try to help mitigate some of this. So as proposed, with this budget, the mill rate would be 32.95%. It's currently 43 and change, so we're talking about a 10.27 drop in the mill rate. And again, that's due to the revaluation. The vehicle rate is capped, so it's gonna stay at 32.46, and this budget does propose 800,000 additional dollars into the road fund, and that is to help deal with some of the inflationary pressures we've seen. We had to cut back on the road projects we've had planned for the last few years, because the prices keep increasing by so much. So we're trying to mitigate some of that, but that'll be the council's discretion, whether or not they want to move forward with that recommendation or not. And the mill rate, over time, if you look at this chart, this is one I show on a regular basis, the median household income are the blue bars. We only had them up to 2023, but you can see generally the mill rate stayed fairly flat, increasing slightly over the last several years, as household income has increased fairly steadily. With this proposed budget, because of the revale, we're talking about a significant drop in the mill rate. This will be the lowest, if approved, at its, the proposed rate would be the lowest the mill rate has been since 2011. And there have been revaluations along the way, so every five years, so it's, that's a pretty significant drop. So what are some of our budget priorities? Again, maintaining the funding for capital improvement and the capital non-recurring expenditure funds at approximately $2 million, I think is critical. I don't want to drop anything below that. Maintaining a strong fund balance at the proposed 11.5% for the reasons I stated. Adequately fund the contractual anticipated market-driven increases in salary and benefits, and then adequately fund all the other contractual increases that we have. So all of our software, hardware contracts, those types of things, service contracts, they all have built-in increases that we have to maintain, and so this budget would accomplish that. We'll focus on education for a minute. As Superintendent Emmett stated, they're coming in for $68,153,339 request. That's 4.95% increase over the last year's budget, or approximately $3.2 million. In August each year, we do go through a process where we also calculate, something we have to do for the state, we have to calculate what the cost to the town is for other services that we provide to them, to the schools specifically. And so for FY '23, '24 fiscal year, which is the year that would account for this budget and this process, is about $11.8 million. That includes all custodial and non-custodial services direct to the school, and about $7.5 million. And then the debt service for that fiscal year, $4.3 million. And again, the debt service number is 4.3 in the fiscal year 23, '24. This year, we're looking at that 3.64 is what it expected to drop to for the fiscal year. Proposed budget also includes that increase of $800,000 that I mentioned for the road fund, and it, the engineering department's also requested an additional $35,000 for the, for their budget for the sidewalk repair matching fund program. We did that as a pilot a couple of years ago. We continued it last year. It's been very successful. We've had a good use of the funds, and a number of our, the sidewalks labs throughout town have been restored, and so engineering department's recommended that we keep that going. It's something that it helps offset the cost for those that might not be able to afford the full cost of it, and there's a process that they have to go through, through the social services department to apply for that. Capital improvement projects, as part of the budget document, you'll see that the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee has ranked 41 projects that were requested by the various departments, totaling over $6.5 million. The proposed budget has $1 million to fund these projects, so obviously there are some decisions to be made, but they did a priority ranking for the council's consideration. Really, the projects run the gamut. There are road projects, there are drainage projects, there are parks and recreation projects, it's pretty much everything under the sun. There are a few position and reclassification requests that we do have in this budget. For the town manager's budget, we are requesting that the social media communications manager position be installed as a full-time position. Right now, we did that as a test, using some of the ARPA funds on a part-time basis. I think we've shown over the last year or so the value of having dedicated personnel to do that work. And again, with the pending budget referendum, I mean, a school bond referendum and other things going on in town, I think it's critical that we maintain control of that message and help get the word out, and I'm asking for that position to be funded in this year's budget. There's some, through the class and compensation and some reorganizations, we're asking for some salary increases for certain departments, asking to move a finance position from part-time to full-time. We have a part-time individual that is gonna be leaving soon, and given the amount of work in the finance department, I think it's critical that we get more help in that department, and so we are asking to make that a full-time position. And then we have a building department position that we did on a pilot basis this year, where it's really about working with, I talked about all the projects that are being done on the Silas Dean and other, in the commercial sector. These are big projects, Fresh Market, they have their grand opening is coming up this week on the 23rd. We have several other grand openings coming up. These projects take a lot of work to coordinate with the town departments for inspections. And in the past, I will say, when I got here, Weathersfield didn't have the best reputation of working with the various companies to get through the process, where it's getting the approvals to getting the permits done. And so we've worked very hard to come up with creative ways to be more business-friendly and help, show that we're gonna help anyone that wants to open a business in Weathersfield, that we're gonna walk into this process. So we did this on a test basis in the building department. So we did this on a test basis in the building department, and it, all accounts, it's done wonders. I mean, we've received lots of very positive feedback from the developers, from the companies opening up in town, and we feel like this is an important position to maintain. We do have some revenue offsets that are going to help pay for this position, and we'll be discussing that in the budget meeting with that department when they come forward. And then finally, police, we have going from part-time to full-time animal control officer. Previous to this year, we partnered with the town of Newington for animal control. Newington contacted us back in, I want to say, January timeframe, and said that they were no longer interested in that arrangement, that they wanted to maintain their animal control officer on their own and not share positions with us anymore. So we kind of had to do an adjustment. And so we did have part-time position funded there, but this is a requirement, we have to have animal control. And so this is a pretty necessary position, that the money there is the difference between what we had budgeted last year and what's required for the full-time position. So in summary, I use this graphic in the past years, I think it's pretty effective if the dollar bill represents all of our expenditures for this proposed budget. This area in orange here, 52%, that's the school budget, as presented by the Board of Ed. This smaller orange area is that additional funds that we pay for the schools. So that brings their total up to about 61%. If you want to look at public safety and public works, that's an additional 26%. And then 13% is everything else. So it's all of the staff on the general government side, it's all of the funds for contingency, for fund balance, it is all of our contractual requirements, it's Parks and Rec, it's MDC, it's electric bills, it's everything. And that's 13% of the total budget. So with that, again, I think this budget does a lot of what we try to accomplish each year with our budgets. It supports the schools completely with their ask, it funds commitments and obligations, it maintains the capital funding, it improves our levels of services that we provide, it maintains or increases our reserves, and it continues to reduce the debt service. Schedule, again, we are here at the public hearing. As the mayor mentioned earlier, we have the department work sessions coming up over the next two weeks, and that's followed by some deliberation meetings with the council and meeting to the final budget vote, which is currently scheduled for the 14th. With that, thank you, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Appreciate all the work you and your staff did. Finance Director Mike O'Neill, I see you. Thank you to you and all your staff, all the work you did. I know the countless hours that everybody puts in, and we all appreciate it. So what we're going to do, we're going to open it up quickly for the council for any questions or comments, and then we'll open the public hearing for any comments and questions, and I'll give you a preview into that in terms of the time limit and all that stuff. So at this point, I will open up to any counselors with any questions or comments at this time. Remember, we'll have the department heads in over the next couple of weeks to go into more depth. But does anybody on the council have any quick questions or comments of our town manager?
Seeing none, thank you, Fred. Appreciate it. Thank you. At this time, we're going to open the public hearing for public comment, and I'm going to read a statement that I read at each meeting, with a little bit different, that now this is 10 minutes, as some of you may know. But during this public hearing, any resident or property owner who desires to speak at the subject budget hearing shall initially be heard for no longer than 10 minutes. After all persons who desire to speak, those persons wishing to speak for a second time shall be allowed to do so, and this will not exceed 10 minutes as well. So you have up to two times, if you wish. After all persons have spoken a second time, any person actually can speak again. When you step to the podium, please state your name and address. At this point, the green light will come on. Those of you who've been here before know over there. The red light will come on when you have reached the 10-minute limit, and when one minute is left, which will be the nine minute, you'll see a yellow light come up. I ask that you address your comments to the entire council, so please address them to us. And I ask you to refrain from any derogatory or personal counts. Please, at all times, remain respectful. We're here to listen to you, to hear from you. This is what's great about democracy. We want to hear your opinions, but we do ask that you be respectful. This section is for public comment. The council will generally not engage in a dialogue during this time. If there's any follow-up needed on any specific items, please leave your contact information with the town clerk, and the town manager will follow up with you. And at this time, we will start the public hearing. We have a list. I'm going to start with the list that you signed up upfront with Cheryl Pierce. And if you're not on the list, it's okay, you still can speak, but we're going to go in order, and the first person I have, the one in the lottery, Polly Moon, you're first. So Polly, you're up. Please state your name and address, please, for the record. You're our lead-off hitter.
Definitely worth getting here early. Polly Moon, 23 Orchard Brook Drive. First thing I would like to do is to thank all of you, because, for the hard work that you do in general, and just want you to know that it is really appreciated. I appreciated seeing the Board of Ed budget and the fact that the staff and Mr. Emmett and the board have worked so hard on it. And I think we all should feel the same way. It's a difficult year, but I know everyone's working hard on it. It's interesting, and Audrey, I also wanted to congratulate you on your new position and also a great speech. That was very, very good. And it reminded me that last week, or I've forgotten whether it was a week or two weeks ago, I was asked to participate in the Capstone Project, which is done by the high school juniors. And it's such a wonderful program, because they work on projects, and then they make presentations to the staff and members of the community. And I was just so impressed. As a former Board of Ed member, I am always so pleased and so proud of our school system. I am here tonight on behalf of the Friends of the Library, and the first thing that I would like to do is to urge you to approve the library's budget. As you will all, if you don't know, you will, it's a very small part overall of the town's budget. And having worked very closely with the director, I've been at the library board meetings and have interacted with the staff, and there are some terrific people there who are doing some terrific work and services all, whether we use the library or not. We at the, and the Friends are here to help supplement the library's operating budget. There are programs that we sponsor or we fund that are outside of the library's budget that are, we are finding very popular with citizens and would either have to come out of the library's budget or not be offered at all. Within the last year, we have provided museum passes, which many of you may have used, to the tune of about $4,500. We sponsored the summer reading program for both adults and children for approximately $12,000. We sponsored a library speaker consortium to the tune of nearly 4,600 baby bundles, which are passed out to new parents when they come in for birth certificates after their babies have been born. One of our most fun ones, $3,000. We also contributed $5,000 to the Story Walk, which hopefully everyone will, if they have not been to it, will check it out. The library design project, we, members of our board, are participating to the best of our abilities with the program itself and with some of the planning, but are also, will be supporting through funds as they are needed. Some of the ways that we have, that we raise funds, first and foremost is we have a big book sale coming up over the weekend, so we look forward to seeing everyone, which will be our last one for a year or so because of the library redesign project. We are also sponsoring a donation night at Puerto Vallarta on June 24th, where they will provide us with a percentage of food and drink that are sold on that night. We also are working on, we're taking advantage of the time where we will have to be kind of dormant because of the redesign project, to work on supporting or starting a mini-golf project, which other libraries have done, but, which sounds like a very fun way to have someone set up a mini-golf course throughout the library and encourage people to come. It's got to be better than going to mini-golf on the Berlin Turnpike. Certainly will be warmer. But, so we're working on those projects at this time. So I thank you for your time, and good luck with everything.
Thank you, Polly. Thank you. Next, I have Bob Woodward. Bob, basketball season's over, so.
Never.
Well, world champion Yukon ladies. Again, name and address for the record, Bob.
Yes, and I'm supposed to put this, oh, right here, okay. Thank you. My name is Bob Woodward. I live at 456 Middletown Avenue here in Weathersfield, and we've lived there for 47 years. I have some deep concerns about this budget. When I first received the revaluation notice, I did some of my math, I have an undergraduate degree in math, I trust my work with numbers. I came up with an equivalent to the 43.22 mill rate from last year of 27.9. I went home two weeks ago, took Mr. Presley's number of 32.95, rounded it up to 33.0s, multiplied it times my revaluation amount, and came up with a tax increase of 17%. I called two other people. They got back to me. One came up with 14%, one came up with a bit under 10%. The numbers should be different. The percentage should have been the same. It should have been 4.42. To get 4.42% increase, I had to go down on my, based on last year's taxes, I had to go down to a mill rate of 29.2. Something is very wrong with these numbers. They're frightening. Our income is far below the median income that Mr. Presley put up there. We've owned this house for 47 years. We intend to own it, God willing, until we can't own it anymore, because we feel we can live there at less cost than we can in some of the other options that are out there for us. We fight the inflation on food and eggs and insurance and electric, but one of the biggest concerns we have is taxes. And yes, you do some things that benefit us. 45% of this budget benefits us, and we're basically grateful for it. But I can't pay you a 17% increase next year and have no intention of doing that. You will have to come and knock heads with me before I will do that. That's way above what should be paid. And it's a frightening increase. I will pay you 45 cents on the dollar if I have to, because for 47 years, we've given you free money for the school system, which we have never impacted because we've never had kids. And you've taken the money and you've spent it, and we've never complained. We've given electronic gizmos to children in town, and we have one used laptop working at home. So if I have to, I will say no more to the school system next year. And if I have to beyond that, I'll say no more to the debt service. You have lost my vote for the school referendum, because to put that on top of a potentially 17% increase, it's just not going to be there. And I probably would withhold from Parks and Rec because I felt that they did an unethical thing up at Millwoods Park. Now, I know you say we can't withhold money from taxes, but somewhere, you've got to have a different message coming out to us, that you want all of us in town. You don't just want the people with six-figure and up incomes in town. There are a wealthy number, healthy number of us in this town, not just seniors who received a 2.5% increase from Social Security. My pension paid me the same. I don't expect it to pay this year with the way the market's going, but 2.5% is a lot different from what you're proposing. And there are people out there working who are struggling to make ends meet, and I know some of them. I know someone who has a good job, and he said, "My 401K went down, it's a good thing I'm working." There's a lot going on in people's lives, and the potential increases of this budget are going to be hurting. I will follow the process through, and we'll see where it goes. But please remember that we are all part of this town, and whether we're above the median income level or below the median income level, and this budget is going to be hurting to a lot of people. You are here, I think, for all of us. Please be here for all of us. Thank you.
Thank, excuse me, thank you, Bob. Next, I have Scott Wands. Scott?
I'm Scott Wands. I live at 4 Avalon Place here in town. First, I want to thank the council, Fred, all members of the town staff. I know it's hard work to put this budget together, and very appreciative on behalf of me and my family for all the hard work that goes into creating the budget, Superintendent Emmett for the school's budget. Thank you all. I'm in favor of the town budget as presented and the 4.95% increase, so I want to start there. And then I'm going to steal from you, Mr. Mayor, and talk about three areas of the budget that I want to really highlight today. So first, as a member of the library board, I'm in support and ask you to fund the library budget at 2.196 million as requested. This is actually a lower budget than the FY '25 budget, by just about $55,000. It's important to keep the level of services to the library at this important time. We have the library renovation project happening this year, and this would be not the right year to, as we do all the hard work on our library, open up the doors, do a ribbon cutting to cut services for the library. I want to thank Polly and the Friends and all the hard work they do. When you look at the budget and you look at the programming line, it's $7,300 is requested from the town for the program the library does. That is only possible because of the Friends. 82% of the budget you have before you is for the personnel, the staffing, that Brook runs so well at the library here. It's a very small percentage due to the services, the books, the online contracts that we have for hoopla and things like the town uses, and we cannot cut back further. Brook is good at getting blood out of a stone, but there isn't any more blood to have out of those stones. Second, I want to talk in favor of the Board of Education budget as requested, at $68 million plus, as was already mentioned. I know this is an increase here, but as was already mentioned, this is lower than many of our surrounding communities here, lower than the state average, and has important increases for things like social work, math interventionalists, special education teachers, pre-K through, pre- through K expansion. This is mental health. This is student safety. This is instruction for our town's youngest learners, and these are areas I would encourage you to, in a difficult year, to not cut back on further. Finally, as a member of the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, I encourage you to not only fund it the $1 million as requested, but actually to increase that if it possible. I know this is a hard year, and that's probably not going to be possible, but as was mentioned, we have a $6.5 million budget of need and a $1 million we have a $6.5 million budget of need and a $1 million budget of requested funds at this time. The deferred maintenance costs are going to keep increasing for the town. There are lines that we saw this year that increased and doubling from last year. A generator was $40,000 last year, $80,000 this year. The further we push these down the road, it's only going to have increased costs for the town. So I would encourage you to try to find increased money if possible and definitely not decrease it. It's only going to come back to bite us in future years. Last, I know this is a difficult budget year, and we've already heard some comments, and there'll be other people that will follow me here, and encouraging you to cut back, lower the mil rate, lower the increase of the budget. I bought my house in town 15 years ago. This is a better town. It is a better place to live, a better place to raise its family because of all the hard work this town has put in, because of the increases we've put into services, because of the economic development. Main Street in Weathersfield, in Old Weathersfield, is a whole different place than it was when I bought here 15 years ago. I want to keep our town on this trajectory. I want to not go backwards, and I encourage you to fund, again, at level 4.95% as requested from the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Next, I have Michael Danzivero, and if I pronounce your name incorrectly, I apologize. Yep, Michael?
Yeah, sure. So I'm going to keep moving on then. Thank you, Michael. I have, and again, if I mess up your name, I apologize, Ally Flynn. Is Ally here?
Pass as well.
You want to?
Just for the moment, please.
Okay, sure. Yeah, of course. Next, I have Robert Young. Mr.
Good evening. Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. First of all, I'd like to read something to you that you should all think about because you're the problem. The Federal Reserve Open Market Committee judges that inflation of 2% over the long run, as measured by the annual change in the price index for, for personal consumption expenditures, is most consistent with the Federal Reserve's mandate for maximum employment and price stability. When households and businesses can reasonably expect inflation to remain low and stable, they are able to make sound decisions regarding savings, borrowing, investments, which contribute to a well-functioning economy. For years, town of Weathersfield has gone way beyond the 2% that the Federal Reserve would like to see in order to keep our economy strong and healthy. You continue to come in with budgets and spending and purchasing items that are way beyond, way beyond, and all you do is hurt the rest of us. You also unfortunately hurt yourselves too. When you go out to bond, you go out to buy a truck on time payments, you're going to pay a hefty amount of money for interest. And that affects all of us now when you do that. When you go out to bond for your schools, you're going to affect all of us because of your actions, which are not in line with what the government wants. Now, you're a government agency, and I don't understand why, except for we're in Connecticut, and that's a big problem. But the thing is, we should be holding our increases to 2% and no more if we want to have. I live a lot better with a 2% increase. If you recall, six, eight years ago, before COVID, we had inflation that was extremely small, very small amount of inflation every year, and life was good. It's when we got into COVID, we got into all of these high prices, we started to drown. Yet towns were, were trying to hold the line, I believe, at that point, but since then, it's been out of hand. So I would hope that you would consider the fact that you're, you're going against, what you're doing is you're hurting everybody by coming in with these kinds of numbers for your budget. You need to get out there and negotiate something that I don't believe the town of Weathersfield or any of these towns realize that they have to negotiate. You just had recently a purchase to, or I should say, a contract where there was no negotiations. It was what the, what the contractor wanted, and he also included travel, his mobilization costs. He included surcharge for fuel. Why would you, why would you pay that, Mayor? You're out of your mind, and it affects all of us. Poor job by our council. You should have not hired that guy, even though he was the only sole bidder. You should have told him to get down the road and goodbye. Right now, we're looking at a, what, referendum coming up, and when you start looking into the conversations, they're talking 6%, 20% in escalations in those prices that you're seeing for these new school renovations. Who can afford that? That causes a lot of issues with the Federal Reserve as far as holding inflation down when you're paying 10, 15% escalations per our consultants. But let's go back to this budget that we have tonight. You know, you're trying to deliver services from what the, what the introduction message from the town manager is, that he's trying to deliver on many existing services to our residents. And he expects, and, and those are things that they expect and deserve, but at what price? There has to be a price. I understand everybody wants everything, but there's only so much money that can go around. And by the statement that the town manager has in here, he's saying that everybody deserves. He says, our residents expect and deserve. That's an open book. What happens to our inflation when we have a statement like that? We also, we also noticed in here that the real estate values have gone up on our properties. Our mil rate has gone up, and really, the mil rate in my case went up 24%. Not good. Not good at all. I mean, you're, when you take your 3.85% for the towns, well, that, that's your town side, and, and the 4.9% on the BOE side, you've got 4.42. That is twice what the Federal Reserve is saying we should be looking at. I don't care about these other towns that the manager put up on the wall, on, on the screen that shows that they have higher rates. I don't care about them. They're incompetent. They're, they're the problems, and we got to get Weathersfield to become in line, or I guess you call in step, with the Federal Reserve. Now, you also have empire building going on here. We had empire building going on last year. We have a stagnant population, 27,000 people, yet we keep building on, oh, we need more people. Oh, we need more people. For what? We give them, everybody that walk, that has a job here has a computer in front of them. That was supposed to make their job a lot easier, more efficient, and able to put out more production. But we have to continue hiring people. We continue to spend money on new initiatives. When I say new initiatives, I'm thinking of those IT things. What do you call it? The Elm website. All kinds of IT stuff that you have going on that is new, but you let our existing infrastructure go to hell. And you do this on purpose. You don't do it because it just happened. You do it on purpose, and the people should realize that because if you don't take care of what you currently have, and you go off on new ventures, you're, you're not doing what you should be doing. We should have recall, and I'll bet you, and we also should have referendum for our budget, but we'll never see that in this town. But that is what's really needed here. Again, I'm going back to the employees that you're now talking about hiring, a full-time social media and communications manager. We need that for the town manager's department. There's some other people in here that you're looking to hire. We don't need these people, and, and what really burns me in reading all of this, in the past, the town created this position, this is, I think you're talking about, oh, the media guy. The social media and communications, I believe. In the past, the town created this position funded by ARPA funds, disguised as a pilot, social media manager role as part of an existing position. Now, how many times have we heard, when you got this ARPA money, you're not supposed to, you're supposed to use it, but don't hire someone who's going to be full-time? It's not, it's not meant to be a full-time job after ARPA ends. ARPA ended. You should be canceling that position. There's no reason, and we heard so many, I think the superintendent wanted to do something like that with some, some, some people. He wanted to keep some on and move them on into this budget, and I don't think he was able to do that. But here at the town manager level, we were able to get away with it, okay?
Mr. Young, your time is up. I'm going to ask you to quickly summarize. You know you can come back another day. Your time is up, sir.
That's another thing, Mayor. At the next election, we're going to get rid of this.
Your time is up. Thank you, Mr. Young. I appreciate it. Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Rogers. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for our dialogue over the past few days. You know, I, I grew up here in town. I grew up on Stockade Circle, and I was glad when, a couple of years ago, by sheer accident, I ended up getting to come home. I, I left Weathersfield to join a Catholic religious order, and I traveled the world, and actually, I ended up working for Pope Francis, God rest his soul. And after a long time, my wife and I, after I left that order, ended up coming home to Weathersfield. And we came home because we, our, our first day living in an apartment in Enfield, we were stuck in Enfield, and it was a place we didn't want to be, and I said, let's go to Village Pizza and see if my picture is still on the wall from when I played T-ball. Art and John can be forgiven that it is no longer there. It was like 1988 or something, so I think it's okay. My brother's still up there, though. You know, I really appreciate the effort that's gone preparing this year's proposed budget, but I'm here tonight because I'm concerned about the continued tax increases, especially in a year when many residents are feeling this financial pressure. You know, I had the opportunity to work as a staffer in the Massachusetts State House for a little bit, as a, it worked for the Progressive Caucus, as a, as a member of that caucus, and frankly, even as a, as a committed Democrat, I, I don't see enough being done to cut inefficiencies or grow long-term revenue in a meaningful way or in a manner that provides for the basic services that the public good require, and which would be truly meaningful investments to grow our grand list in a meaningful way and provide revenue for all the extras that are built in to the budget. The proposed increase really comes down to about 6% in spending. When considered in that context of the recent reassessment, it results in a real mil rate jump of about 44, jump to, jump to about 44.87. On median value, on a median value home here in town, that's an extra of at least $546 in taxes a year. Now, that's probably necessary in some areas, but I think we need to ask, what are we cutting and how are we increasing efficiency instead of defaulting to the taxpayer and demanding they pay for basic services? So there really probably should be a freeze, and I, I work in healthcare now, and of course, we're facing these headwinds of the economy too. You know, we've had to freeze non-essential hiring as much as we don't want to do it. So adding a new technical assistant or adding a social media expert and adding new multiple HR positions is questionable in a tight budget year. We just can't do it. You know, I have to say to, to my team sometimes, I would love to give you an extra tech. I would love to get, we can't do it right now. So the question is, could we pause those new roles or explore shared services across, like other Connecticut towns have? For example, we could pause, pursue shared services rather for legal HR and IT. West Hartford and other towns have demonstrated how to do this well. They share legal and IT functions with regional agencies, and they save about $100,000 to about $300,000 annually. We could do better on our rate of intern on economic development, too. You know, our grand list, with all due deference to the report earlier, actually decreased this year in number of payers, which is actually the important thing, not the mil rate. Our, our grand list decreased, and so the 38, that is report, 38% that is, is up is actually art, is actually artificial based on the reassessment. So what metrics are in place, I have to ask, to track success? What are your KPIs for the newly restructured Economic Development Department? You know, there's also a question about repurposing or leasing under geolized buildings. And one of the things that we found very successful when I helped represent Jamaica Plain in Boston was that we used unused properties that were owned by the municipality and gave them to nonprofits or startups as incubators, as a way to help build that tax base, because if you can build those businesses here in town, you'll have the ability to, frankly, you'll have the ability to, to get that loyalty. But those are the folks who are going to bring in the equipment and the things that we need in order to actually raise that tax base in a meaningful, commercial way. We have these empty buildings in town. Let's do something with them. You know, if new positions are being added and taxes are going up, residents still deserve some transparency on a few things, though. We need to know what each new hire will generate in savings or revenue. I need to know what that social media manager will do other than just control the narrative on the Facebook page. I think we need a little more dialogue. Granted, it needs to be civil, but we need a little more dialogue, not less. We need more civic engagement, not less. We need to know the measurable impact of incentive programs. We need a five-year capital and staffing plan so we're not hit with these same surprises every year. We need to know where we're going. In the meantime, it seems we're trying to save on things which all the other surrounding towns consider essential services. Now, a survey of the sidewalks in Old Weathersfield alone, with all due deference to the idea that sidewalk program is working, reveals that the policy putting their maintenance on the, on the homeowners is failing our community. 41 properties have been cited in the past week. It puts vulnerable populations like seniors who might be walking through Old Weathersfield and trip on one of those and fall, and let me tell you, working in healthcare, the thing we worry most about is a senior citizen or a person with a disability falling because we know it can lead to serious injury or death. It's a real liability on the town. It puts those populations at risk. It puts populated folks with disabilities at risk. It puts our town in danger of lawsuits that far exceed the cost of regular maintenance paid for by the taxpayer. Now, I did some research. I talked to the, to the, one of the former sidewalk inspectors. He gave me a number for the last time that the town fixed all the sidewalks, granted, charging back the fixing, fixes those sidewalks to the taxpayer. He said that the, the total cost back then, adjusted for, adjusted for inflation now, all the maintenance for a year would be no more than $200,000. So if we're talking about something that would cost no more than $200,000 to do for everybody, and we're also talking about the possibility of lawsuits that could be in excess of millions, we ought not be penny wise and pound foolish. Every other surrounding town has moved in this direction. Rocky Hill even has an enviable master sidewalk plan to provide links to their schools, to public buildings, to parks, to places of worship, to business districts, and to public transportation facilities, all things that we need if we want to grow this community in the ways that we say that we want to. Our roads have massive potholes. Our schools are in such a sad state of repair that they're holding, they're actually holding back property values. I know we're saying they're going up, but think about what it would look like if we had schools that actually served our children, and what that would do to bring younger families in who could provide a stable, long-term tax base. Those families often reconsider moving here, and to be honest, my wife and I thought long and hard about it, given the school ratings. Why would you move here if you wanted to start a family, knowing that U.S. News and World Report reports that our graduating seniors have a college readiness index of 27 out of 100? We need to stop deferring maintenance on things that matter until, as was mentioned, it's far too late and far too expensive. So I respectfully ask the council to take a deeper look at the efficiencies, revenue diversification, and service prioritization before placing more burden on residents. Journalist and social activist Dorothy Day once said that everybody wants to change the world, but nobody wants to do the dishes. We need to get back We need to get better at doing the basic things that make our community safer and healthier so we can grow our grand list in a meaningful way and make a Weathersfield a more desirable place for young families who bring stable tax income, make Weathersfield a more desirable place for the businesses that will bring the equipment that we can actually charge taxes on, and make Weathersfield a more desirable place for all of us to be long-term. In other words, I think what I've heard from the people here tonight, I think we'll probably hear more of this, we're asking you to do the dishes first so we can ultimately transform our town to meet the moment. Thank you for your work on this, but thank you for the work you have yet to do on this, and thank you for your service to our town. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Those are all the names that I have listed. There were a few of you that passed. I'm going to ask if you want to speak now, and then I'm going to open up. If you didn't sign up here, it's okay, and you want to speak, it's fine, but those, there were a couple of you that passed, I think it was Michael and Ally, if I got that right. Do you want to speak now, or do you?
Yeah, I guess I'll speak.
Okay, please state your name and address.
Along with the sidewalk.
Oh, yeah, just so when you get to the point, just state your name and address, okay? You have 10 minutes.
Hi, my name's Mike Dancer. I'm at 291 Griswold Road. We've been residents in Weathersfield for 27, close to 28 years. I'm not happy about the mill rate and reevaluation either. It seemed odd to me that all the most expensive properties on that graph seem to have the least increase in values. But besides that, the main reason why I came here was to reiterate about sidewalks. My sidewalk has been cracked for three or four years. I've asked the town to come out and assess it, and every time they come out, they say it's because some tree that was growing there 30-something years ago is gone, and the sidewalk cracked and is now leaning towards the road where the tree isn't even at. So the tree was over here, my sidewalk is here. 10 years ago, they redid the drains on our street, and the sidewalk is pointing directly into the drain, and no one can seem to come and fix it. We had an electrical storm that knocked out some power lines. They came out in a week and fixed the sidewalk that was burnt up by that. And I've been asking for three or four years for someone to come out and explain to me how a tree that's been gone for 30 years somehow impacted my sidewalk, yet they came into the drain 10 years ago, the sidewalk is leaning into where the drain was and not towards the tree. So just to say that I think residents shouldn't be required to pay for it, because I think it's silly, I didn't ask for the sidewalk to be there, it was there when I got there. And if it was up to me, I'd just go rip the thing up. But I live on Griswold Road. It sidewalks the entire way, and there is lots of cracks, lots of spots where people trip and fall. My neighbor tripped and fell on the crack that I have. Luckily, he didn't sue me or the town, but it seems silly for the $1,400 to replace that sidewalk that the town can't pick that cost up, especially after what you guys just raised for the mill rate and the evaluation, devaluations. So that's my two cents. Thank you for all the stuff you guys do, and good luck trying to get that budget passed.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. Ally, did you want to speak?
Yeah, just for a moment.
Yeah, just your name and address for the record.
And only for a moment, because I'm nervous speaking in front of people.
Take your time. Let's go.
I'm Ally Flynn. I live at One Megat Park. I've lived there since the fall of 2018. I've lived in four towns in Connecticut my entire almost 54 years here. I've never lived in a, I've never lived in a home with sidewalks in the front, so this was first to me, and I have lovely neighbors who have informed me of what to expect in the town, and they expect, they said, oh, you know, you're going to have to clear the snow and the ice and so forth, and I'm like, that's okay. I'm a homeowner now by myself for the first time ever in my entire life, so I figure there's responsibilities I wasn't used to that I would have to do. I was never informed that I would have to repair my sidewalks, not by my real estate agent, not by the real estate agent that sold the home, you know, through my real estate agent. So when I came home from work the other day and I found a note on my door, I was extremely surprised. I am a single-income home. I, I have two 19-year-old daughters who go to school, I have a dog, I have two cars. I work at the DMV, so I literally walk to and from work every day, breaks, lunches. I've walked across the Putnam Bridge to go shopping at Stop &amp; Shop, thanks to the new bike path and pedestrian walk. It's been great. I have my car serviced at Lamore's, so I walk to and from Lamore's when I have to have my vehicle serviced. I would have walked here tonight if I didn't have to walk home in the dark, but it's a walkable neighborhood, and that was one of the first things that one of my neighbors who came up to me said when I was unloading the moving truck, was you're going to love Old Weathersfield. It's a walkable neighborhood. But again, I was surprised to find at the beginning of a holiday weekend where I spent most of the weekend with family that all of a sudden I might be hit with another financial burden. I, you know, I work for the state, so saying my salary is just over $50,000 a year, anybody can find that, because I work for the state. Our salaries are posted on a state website, so I take home like $20,000 less than, I mean, my, my take-home salary is not very large, and for a single-income home, I don't know if I'm going to spend $300 to repair a quarter-inch lip in my sidewalk, or $3,000. I don't know what to expect. I haven't had the opportunity to contact the email address or call that was provided on the documents left at my door. But on top of everything that I, I burden solely on my, my small income, I, if it's, parallels anything to qualifications for Medicaid, I surpass what I'll, I don't think I'll be able to get assistance. I haven't checked into that yet either, haven't had a chance, but, so I haven't filled out the paperwork and I haven't seen it. But again, I, I walk to work. I have tripped so many times in all the sidewalks around my town, and I have never once thought, I'm going to call out my neighbor on this, and I'm going to make them pay for this, because I never knew that was a thing. And I think that puts a lot of animosity between myself and my, my neighbors. If, if I say, you know, you need to fix your sidewalk, you need to cut back your shrubs, that's something they have to do, because they planted those shrubs, you know, but they didn't put those sidewalks there. They chose to live in a neighborhood with sidewalks, as I did. But again, I don't mind taking on the responsibility and making sure those sidewalks are clear of ice and snow, but if we're fixing the roads, which again, I walk to work, so I don't use that often, but if we're going to be fixing the roads, I, I don't see why we can't spend the extra funds to fix the sidewalks. All the adjacent streets near my road, the sidewalks are in terrible, terrible condition. Cove Park, all those sidewalks are deteriorating because of all the heavy machinery that gets, you know, driven over the sidewalks for the fairs and the carnivals and the markets and what have you. But never once have I thought to myself, I'm going to make my neighbor pay for this. I want them to pay for this. I want them to make my walkable neighborhood more walkable. I just thought it was something the town would eventually get to, and I have tripped. I have tripped several times. I'm not a senior, and hopefully I will be here till I am a senior, until I retire in 13, 14 years from the DMV. But if I can't, I can't afford to move. I can't afford to buy a new home in another town. So unfortunately, that's what it's come down to for me, is that it just makes it undesirable to be in a town that's making me pay for this. So that's it.
Thank you, Ally. So that was all the names of folks who signed up, but you're all welcome to speak as well. So anybody who has not spoken yet who would like to, does anybody would like to speak? Yes, Mike?
My, my name is Mike Libka. I live on 51 Orchard Drive. I'll be quick. I wish you kept it at five minutes rather than 10 minutes, but I think for where you are right now in the budget process, 4.42% is very good. I know you guys have meetings over the next month, and based on my experience with the town, probably you'll see that go down by a percentage point, which I think would be a, a good, a good endpoint. There was a, for some of you that may not be aware, there was a big article in the Hartford Current about a week and a half ago, where some towns were looking at 15, even 20% increases. I grew up in Wallingford, and their proposed budget was 19%. So I feel that the town is in very good shape, and I'm always one that I'm willing to pay more at the local level than at the state and the federal level, because you can come to meetings like this, and you really understand where your money's being spent. So I'm confident you guys over in your budget meetings will get to a, a, a good endpoint with, with the budget, and I just want to thank you for providing the opportunity to come and express opinions. And, you know, I had two children that recently graduated from the high schools, and I'm very happy with the education. So for young families out there, this is a great place to raise a family. It's a great place to get an education, and I've just been extremely happy living here. I will be living here for a long time if it's up to me. So thank you for all the work you're doing and where you are, and for the diligence, and I'm confident we're going to end up in a good spot with, with the budget and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mike. Other, excuse me, other public comment? Yes, please.
Laura Malali, 46 Sunset Boulevard. I hadn't planned on speaking, so bear with me. I've lived in Weathersfield for about 30 years, and I lived in Old Weathersfield and dealt with the sidewalk issue for many years. I moved here with, I have six children, and we moved here, my husband and I, we lived on one income, so that median income thing that was on that chart, we, we don't fit that. But we moved here because it's a lovely town, and we were willing to pay the taxes and the expenses to live here. We did not use the public school system. That was not an issue for us. We wanted to be in a town that was great for raising kids, and we lived in a great neighborhood in Old Weathersfield.
I'm just going to pause you for one second. Just please address the council.
Sorry. We live in a different part of the town now, more south than Old Weathersfield, and we've loved being able to walk, run, cycle, use all the parks, et cetera. We always felt that it was worth whatever we were paying for. We barely paid attention because, what we were paying, because we enjoyed it so much. But I am now an empty nester, and all my children have moved out. My husband is just about to retire, so these, the issue of the budget is a big issue for us, whether we want to continue to stay in Old Weathersfield. I absolutely love where I live. I love my property and everything I've done to it, but it, you know, this has been something we've been paying attention to now. Can we afford to stay here? Because I can't like tell my husband, just work some overtime so we can afford increases in expenses, because he won't be working anymore. And our children do not live in Weathersfield because they can't afford to live in Weathersfield. They live, some of them live close enough that we see them very regularly, but they are questioning whether we should be staying in Weathersfield or not. It's a wonderful town. It's beautiful here. I love it. I'm so glad that you're not building anything down on Stillman Park, whatever. It's so beautiful down there. But I know you have some other things coming up with building new schools and other properties that the state occupies that is going to have to cause more decision-making, and it's not easy decision-making. I will say, I'm really glad we're not Windsor. I grew up in Windsor, and it is so sad to see what is happening to that town. They have lost all their historical charm, and it's just, it's really sad to see what's going on over in Windsor. And so I love Weathersfield, and I know it's a great town, but as has been mentioned, we do need to evaluate where money is going so people don't have to pinch so hard all the time. I do find one item on the budget about the social media slash communication director's salary is quite interesting. I would appreciate if that would be elaborated at, what the social media slash communication person would be actually doing, not just sitting on a keyboard on the social media sites. What other things would that person be doing is a good point to elaborate, and I know I'm not alone on thinking. Could you elaborate on that? So I do thank the council members for your time. I know it's hard work, and you're not always loved, but overall, you are appreciated. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Laura. Appreciate it. Thank you. Excuse me. Further public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to ask those that spoke one time if they want to speak again a second time before we close out the public hearing. I'm not seeing any, any further public comment. Mr. Young?
In the budget, it mentions that this is a maintenance budget and that there was very few requests, and the overwhelming majority of the increases in this budget are the results of market-driven contractual increases in salaries and benefits and continued high-driving costs and goods, for goods and services. As far as the market-driven contractual increases, it all lays right here. You approve all of these, whether it's salaries, you approve the payments, you approve people who are going to review it, and, and then you recommend, or they recommend and you approve. You're all involved in all of these costs that when we read this, it's like somebody else is involved in it, not you. And in fact, you are all involved in it. And then, of course, it says, but it also made clear that this is what the superintendent, the town manager is saying, but it's also made clear that this was done without a reduction in services. We need reductions in services because we've gone way beyond what we can afford, and we've let many of our issues out there go downhill. And it's, it's your decisions. It's your, you know, you're, you're the responsible parties, and, and look what we have. So from here on, I'd like to go to page 47 of the budget book. And in there is 47, I'm getting there, Town Council. In there, under Public Service Contributions, again, I spoke about this last year, you have public event support for $50,000. Again, why? You're, you should, you know, if you're giving this money to public services, they should be, why should we be taxed and then you provide them with some extra money? It doesn't make any sense. And for those nonprofits, the supporters of those nonprofits should be out there beating the streets if they need more money. Those memberships should be beating the streets, not coming to you and asking, give us $10,000 because we need it, and you hand it over to them. You hand over taxpayer money. That's what you do, and you should not be doing this. You should take this out of the budget. Well, let's go to page 56 in this budget. This is Information Systems. And in Information Systems, we have increases in salaries, running from 4.4, 4.6% increases on salaries. Well, what happened to the 2% that we should, that some of us have to live with, who make the, who have to make the payments to fund these 4% and 6, 5% monies? This should come down, and I understand it's contractual, and it's you people that sign the contracts, not me. So it's your responsibility, and we've talked about this before and before and before, and there's like no concern whatsoever. And on the same page, I see DBO, Internal Internet Services. Is that, is that the, yeah, it was last year, $19,000, now it's $40,000. I mean, I don't get it. I just don't get it. On the next page, we have registration renewals of, of $600 this current year, and you're projecting $66,000. and you're projecting $66,000. Oh, yeah. I mean, this is sick. This is sick. And right above it, you have Civic Plus. See, Click, Fix, Service Request Management. $17,000 this year, and you're proposing $30,500. Next, page 77. On the bottom line, on the bottom line, it shows for the year 2024, actuals. It was $146,700, $33. The next year, 2025, your adopted budget shows $271,57. And then it drops in this budget year to 227. What happened last year with your fantastic budget? You have, you have like $40-some thousand that you're over budget. Yeah, I, you should have taken it out last year, Mayor. You were aware of this, and you didn't. Next, page 91. Capital and Strategic Initiatives. I don't think I really want to touch that because it's brand-new, but it's something to be watched as we go further out. And, but on the other hand, on that same, on that same Capital and Strategic Initiatives, it shows where salaries increased from 100? Nope, that's 118. Nope, we'll pass on that. Go to page 103. That is Finance and Accounting. And in there, the bottom line, let me see here, page 102. The bottom line goes across, last year, $731,000. This current year, you have $793,000. And then, in this budget year, you're up to $929,000. I know you brought in a tech on the budget for this particular year going for this '25, '26 year. And that tech, again, you shouldn't even fill the position because our population hasn't increased. There's no reason for us. These people have computers, and they're supposed to be efficient. Why are we bringing in more people? Next, 135. I understand this is difficult, but we have to go over this stuff. And it's not like I can sit down with any of you because we don't do that. And again, Economic and Community Development. This current year, you have for the '24, '25, right now, you're paying somebody called an Economic Development Director $91,000, and you're going to give them next year $114,000. That's a 20% increase, Mayor. The next line item is Town Planner. You're paying them $114,000 right now, and you're projecting to pay them $149,000? What's going on here? And then the next line item down is Community Development Coordinator. You're paying him or her $44,000 this year. And next year, in the budget year that we're talking about, you want to pay him $66,000. That's 33% increase. The next line item is Property Maintenance Enforcement Officer. You're paying that person $76,000, and you're proposing to give them $83,000. That's 8%. I mean, all of these numbers are going so against hurting everybody else. Granted, I'd like to get some of those interest rates increases myself, but on the other hand, it hurts everybody else, and you need to think about that. If we go to, let's see, next, 137, Board of Education. We won't even go there. That's a bad 4-point-whatever percent. 142.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Excuse me, your 10 minutes are up. Mr. Young, your 10 minutes are up. Thank you, sir. Your 10 minutes are up. You know...
Sure, no problem, Mayor, you know? I just wish, it's such a shame you guys don't listen and understand business.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Young. Does anybody have any further comment to say? Yes, Tom?
Good evening. My name's Tom Mazzarella, 600 Walker Hill Road. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, like some of the other commenters. But I didn't want to break my record. I've been coming to these meetings for 15 years. Some of them were up there, most of them were over here. And I just didn't want to just let it go. I moved here in 1963, so I've been here a while. I think it's a wonderful town. In my career, I traveled all over the world, and I always loved coming back to Weathersfield because I thought it was a great place. Raised my family here, my kids. They got a great education. At this point, I want to thank all of you in advance for all the good work you're going to do at the next three or four budget workshops to get this budget down to something that's reasonable. It's not anyone's fault of the revaluation. It's not any counselor's fault or the town manager. It is what it is. But the impact on the residents is outrageous. It's so significant. I saw on the chart where there's plenty of homes that are below the line. I haven't talked to one person that hasn't had a significant increase in their valuation. Faced with the potential of a school referendum, huge impact on people's taxes. I got to, I got to tell you, it's going to be a non-starter after the budget passes. People just cannot accept that kind of a cost increase. Now, not everyone. There's people that are working, they have a successful career. They can pay for that increase. Myself, when I was 40, 50 years old, I was just working all the time. I wasn't thinking how much the mortgage went up. It was just, it was just, get a letter, your escrow's going to increase, and you just pay more. There's a lot of people, the mayor, we talked about it in the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. There's a lot of seniors in this town, in this community that cannot afford a huge tax increase. And you need to do, you need to take extreme measures. You have to cut some things. That's it. And I saw what you're proposing for the capital improvement and CNEF. That's, that's good. We don't want to see things stay at the same level. But this is an extraordinary situation. Inflation could go through the roof. We don't know. I think you have to take some serious cuts, and not just on the town side. I don't agree with the superintendent's statement that he made a few weeks ago where we asked, someone asked about the performance of the students and how that equates to the cost of the spending per student. And his comment was along the lines of, well, typically, a better-funded school system has a better result. Well, the data in Weathersfield doesn't support that. It hasn't for years. And you can't, you have to go back before COVID. It was not a very well-performing school system, and you keep throwing money at it, and there's not a lot of change. There's actually no change. So, you have to rethink that portion of the budget, as well as things that you can control here. And I wish you luck. Thank you very much.
Thank you, excuse me. Thank you, Tom. Any further comments before we wrap up tonight? Seeing none, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.